Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, the first being comments by Mayor. I just have a few brief comments. Number one, I wish to thank everybody, both here in the council, city staff, and other members of boards and commissions who came out this past weekend and helped us work on our new strategic plan. The last one that we did for the city formally was back, I believe, in 2005. This was a nice opportunity, both Friday night and part of Saturday, to get together and brainstorm. There was a lot of good ideas exchanged, a lot of strategies going forward. And I know Bob and staff are gonna take all the information that we went through, put that together, and then come back with a formal write-up on what we discussed. But I thought it was a very fruitful event. Everyone came out and participated and did a great job, and I just wish to thank you for your time and your input. Another comment I'd just like to make this evening is, as we just spoke of at the committee of the whole meeting, and Norm Carlson, one of our members of the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, just spoke to us about a date of June 5th, approximately around 11 o'clock that morning, we will have, the Union Pacific will bring a special train through town with their special cars. They'll take a quick trip up to Kenosha and back, about a 90-minute trip. And this is all in the realm of train safety. And we welcome the community to be there and go for a ride with us. But it's also an opportunity to understand how the rail works, how the whole system works frankly, and some of the safety ideas that we've been working with in the community now for the past few years. So I thank Norm for helping us arrange that as well. Those conclude my comments this evening. Our next item on the agenda is comments by City Manager Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to first talk about electric aggregation real quick, because I think many of you saw an article in the paper within the last week about a situation that's occurring in this entire area with what I'll call over-aggressive salesmen for some of these electric suppliers, contacting people and insinuating that they are the selected supplier for the local community and trying to get them to sign up. One of the things that, and we fielded a number of calls here from residents who have gotten their mailing from the city, I think some were confused as to, what am I supposed to do with this material that I've gotten? Clearly, we've been working with them and trying to articulate for them that they don't have to do a thing. If they don't mail it in, then they will automatically be brought into the program with MC Squared. We also have sent out a letter to all, I think we had 400-plus residents who had already opted into another program over the course of the last year, and just letting them know about what their options are. And they can switch, and they should be contacting both their current supplier as well as MC Squared. We're also encouraging, to the extent that we can possibly do that, to have people go to our website. There's a lot of information on our website. I think Susan's putting it up there now, that shows where people can go to get more information about the electric aggregation program and MC Squared in particular. And there's contact information, and they really should be calling MC Squared and asking any specific questions that they might have about their particular situation and so forth. Because unfortunately, we're learning as we're getting into this that ComEd's records aren't quite as accurate as we would like, and ComEd is telling us that there are some people who have opted to go with another company, who would tell us, no, they haven't opted to go with another company, and so forth. The other thing I've heard, and I'll be sending something out here probably within the next 24 or 48 hours, is that I believe that Commonwealth Edison has just gone out to, if you will, rebid their supply of electricity, and people were wondering how, what kind of a decrease ComEd would see in their supply or their cost, and apparently it's not going down, it's only going up, which means that that savings of 39% is only actually gonna grow. And the other thing that was interesting about this too is that we had not approached those condominium buildings or developments that had electric heat, because they were on a different rate than a residential customer would normally be. And we thought that their rates would be lower than the current rates that we even secured, which now is not the case. And so we're probably gonna have to go back and try and identify those individuals who are on these different rate structures with Commonwealth Edison, because they might even be able to save money by switching over and participating. But that's another topic we'll have to be exploring with the other seven consortia members here over the next week or two, because this was not something we had anticipated. We did anticipate that Commonwealth Edison's rates would be going down, but apparently that's not going to be the case. So for our residents who have switched over, it's gonna be even more of a positive situation than what we had expressed to them even before the referendum. So I just mention that and encourage anybody, if they do have questions, they certainly can call us. The city staff has been very helpful in answering what basic questions we can, and then directing them to MC Squared for more specific questions they might have about how they switch over and where they go from there. I'd be happy to answer any questions any of the aldermen might have with respect to that. If not, the second item is that I know that Karina Walters made some comments at the committee of the whole meeting with respect to steps that have been taken over the last few weeks by the city in working in conjunction with Union Pacific and Metro about rail safety. And I'm gonna ask her to just briefly, in about two or three minutes, summarize, for anybody who's just tuned in, some of those steps that are being taken, Karina, and then where we go from here.
Sure. Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As Bob indicated, during the committee of the hall, I provided a brief presentation regarding the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee and some of the action items that have come out of the most recent meetings. On May 3rd, there were 12 individuals from Union Pacific, Metro, and the city that walked the Union Pacific North, the North Line, from basically Woodland all the way up past the high school, in addition to another group that actually was stationed at the depot to observe commuter behavior. After both groups observed and walked the rail line, we met and brainstormed some potential opportunities to enhance public safety, not only at the train depot, but as well near the tracks. One of the potential action items is building a fence. Now, there is currently a portion of a fence a little bit north of Woodland. However, what's missing is from Woodland all the way up past the high school fencing. So an opportunity there is, Union Pacific, Metro, and the city are gonna identify some costs to potentially put up a fence. That, in addition to all the other opportunities that I will be mentioning this evening, will be going back to the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, and as a result, going back to the city council for final decisions. Norm, as well as the mayor, identified that on June 5th, Operation Lifesaver, which is a train by the Union Pacific, will be stopping in Lake Forest. And we're really looking to not only have the committee members, but other residents, task committee members throughout the city, take the train, identify, and observe other educational opportunities being offered. Another action step on Metro's behalf is to synchronize the express train announcements. As I mentioned, the express trains are literally roaring through the city, and as those are rumbling through the city, you hear the announcement being said, this is an express train, it will not stop. So obviously, there's a timing issue that needs to be reviewed. Another action item that the group is considering is having the northbound trains block Westminster Street, just to encourage, or actually to ensure that commuters aren't crossing the railroad tracks when the lights, when the signals are down. Another opportunity is the exploration to actually close and to remove the at-grade pedestrian crossing at the East Train Station. I indicated earlier that it seems there are a number of bikers, adults, students, that are crossing the tracks up near the high school, and actually, they have their vehicle at the, either at apartments or condos, as well as some businesses. And the Union Pacific, in conjunction with the city, is actually gonna send a letter to all of these residents and businesses, just notifying them that by promoting this type of behavior, firstly and foremost, it's illegal, and secondly, that it should be deterred. Those are just some of the items that the group is gonna be moving forward on in the next couple of weeks. And again, the committee will be making the recommendations to the council at a future date.
Thank you, Karina. Are there any questions, anybody?
I actually have a question. When they closed off the West Lake Forest Center Crossing, pedestrian crossing, what kind of response have we gotten from the commuters to that?
It is a very good question. I received many, many calls, and many of the calls were, this was a great idea, many calls were, this was not a good idea, because now commuters had to walk further north to actually cross the tracks. Many of them were saying it was an inconvenience. And the at-grade platform was removed by Metro, of course, in conjunction with the city, but it is a goal of all transit agencies to really remove all of the at-grade pedestrian crossings. And unfortunately, the accidents at the West Lake Forest Train Station were happening either there or slightly to the north.
Is the idea when they close this, that it will encourage the commuters to get over to the other side before the train comes, rather than do a dash at the last minute?
It is encouraging them to walk, at the West Lake Forest Train Station, it's encouraging them to walk north, probably about 300 feet, on time, not waiting till they hear a train to run across the tracks. What was occurring is people were waiting the last minute, they were being preoccupied by either their iPhone, any sort of electronic communication. And the other factor is that when they were running, they were thinking it was their local Metro train, and in fact, it was an Amtrak train that was actually coming through the station that doesn't stop.
Do we have plans to put more shelters on the east side of the tracks there, so when people are there in the winter, they aren't freezing?
Very good question. The safety committee, we put up two as a trial to see how they would work. In conjunction, now that we have the funding for the underpass, that's another opportunity to where residents actually don't have to be standing out in the elements. But I think it also depends on the final engineering phase and the design in order to identify where we could potentially put more shelters.
Thank you.
That completes my report this evening.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Karina. I did not get an opportunity to thank you at the committee of the whole meeting, but you certainly have been a very integral part of this whole committee and doing a lot of work behind the scenes that the public obviously is not aware of, but you, thank you for all your help. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members.
Just a couple of real quick ones.
Yes.
First, last fall, we approved, I think it was $65,000 for the drill and fill at Townline Athletic Fields. So I've been monitoring that this spring, and pleased to inform you that this morning, when I was out there after a weekend of significant rain, the grass portion of the fields were totally playable, totally. So it appears that the money was well spent, because the alternative of re-excavating, redoing the fields was not economically viable. Number two is living in the fourth ward, I used Telegraph Road to Everett to cross. And last fall, Ramesh and his merry band of city workers gave us a third lane over there. And I took mental note just the other morning, it's looking beautiful. The landscaping is lush and green, it's a tremendous enhancement to that intersection, so I commend you and the city, because I think it was all city employees who did that, for making a very significant improvement in the fourth ward to the intersection of Telegraph and Everett. Next, briefly, I call to Ramesh's attention the access road, the middle access road to Deerpath Middle School, that the curbs, the radiuses, are so tight, where the three lanes are dedicated for turn-in and turnout, that people are running up over the curb, and Ramesh told me that this summer, they're going to change the radiuses, widen them, make it a safer turnout, turn-in. And then lastly, you all know my pet project is to try and get a traffic signal at Old Mill in Waukegan, and Ramesh did a study and tells me we have the warrants, the state may not move so fast, but I see this all as very positive, and I'm pleased that, when I bring things to his attention, the city reacts faster than lightning, and it's very satisfying to me to have the city staff that does that.
Mike, you bring up a good point, too, that I know there's a sign out there on Waukegan, but they will be closing Telegraph Road at Route 22, and I think it is, is it next week?
Today.
Does it start today? So it starts today, and I think the other issue is people, the sign is located now as a electronic sign north of Everett. However, there are also an awful lot of people that turned down Old Mill, and now are gonna find that they cannot go southbound and get out on.
I tell them to turn around in your driveway.
I know you do. I'm out there usually every morning, getting run over, so. But as another fourth ward resident, I think it's important, too, that, you know, we try to get that message out, because it's gonna be pretty crazy for the next couple of weeks. And unfortunately, the contract they're working on 22, those timelines don't typically fit the schedule they're working on, so this may be, this may be a longer period of time, but it's good for the public to be aware of that as well. Any other comments?
No, just I'd like to thank Alderman Edelman for checking on the third ward parks while he's out there. Townline Park isn't the third ward, but we are delighted to have fourth ward alderman come through and.
The whole committee uses him.
Everybody really appreciates it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments by council members?
No.
No, we'll move on. The next item is council committee reports, the first being a finance committee report. And the first item is an approval of the comprehensive fiscal plan for fiscal year 2013, presented by Diane Hall, the Assistant Finance Director. Diane?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the fiscal 2013 budget has been reviewed by the finance committee at several public meetings over the last six months, and tonight, city staff is requesting the approval of the fiscal 2013 fiscal comprehensive plan. Is there any questions I can answer regarding the budget, or?
Any questions or comments for Diane? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the fiscal plan for 2013.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five VAs, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie, and thank you, Diane. Our next item on the agenda is approval of the fiscal year 2013 personnel policies, practices, and official pay plan, presented by DeChey, our Human Resource Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. You have in your budget books, the personnel policies. All of the changes recommended this year, and there are very few, are noted in bold italics, basically a few minor wording changes. Really, the only thing of substance is on page 14, where we added no pyramiding language. We have no pyramiding language in all of our union contracts, but we realized that it's kind of a void that we had in our personnel policies. What that means is that an employee cannot be being paid, say, on vacation or sick leave, and then volunteer to come back in and work overtime and get paid overtime for the same hours. So we just wanna cover all our bases, and that's really the most substantive thing. Minor changes and correcting titles of directives that we've changed through the years, but that's about it. As far as the pay plan is concerned, it does include a 2% general range adjustment, as the city council guided us at an executive session last month.
Any questions for DeChey? I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five VAs, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Birdie, and thank you, DeChey. Our next item on the agenda this evening is the annual vendor approval. This is presented again by Diane Hall. Diane?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at the September 19th city council meeting, there was approvals to change the codes regarding the purchasing policy for vendors for multiple purchases that exceed $20,000. Currently, the city council has to approve all single purchases that are over $20,000. As part of the purchasing code amendment, contracts with vendors or providers delivering services on an ongoing basis where the amounts are anticipated to exceed $20,000 in total shall be presented to the city council for their approval during the annual budget process approval. So tonight, we are requesting the approval of the attached list of vendors that were in your packet for the approval for the fiscal 2013.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask that two additional names that were inadvertently left off be added? One is Richard Franklin, who is the teaching pro out at Deerpath Golf Course, and Alderman Edelman's personal pro. And then the second one is Mr. Ron Stein, who is the karate instructor through the recreation department as well.
I think we can approve it as long as the city's not paying for all those lessons for Alderman Edelman.
Oh, no, he's helping, you saw the financials, he's helping out.
Do I have to recuse myself from doing that?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for Diane? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval. And move to approve as amended.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five VAs, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie, and thanks, Diane, again. Our next item on the agenda is the Housing Trust Report, first item being a consideration of recommendations from the Housing Trust Fund Board pertaining to the senior cottages and the continued acquisition of affordable homes through a partnership of community partners for affordable housing. There's consideration of motions approving the recommendations and providing direction to staff, presented by Alderman Morse.
Thank you. There's two items here, although they're contained in one recommendation, but if I can go through the first item, which is a recommendation to, regarding the senior cottages, which has all been on our docket for a long, long time, so I'm happy that we're coming to closure on that, as well as coming to closure on me. But, and I'd also like to, before I make comments, is recognize Michael Burns, who's the chairman of the Housing Trust, as well as Leslie Chapman, who's here from Lake Forest College. And as you discussed in executive session tonight, we're making a recommendation to sell, effectively sell the, or, the recommendation is, the Senior Cottage Foundation is going to sell its cottages to Presbyterian Homes, and Presbyterian Homes is going to maintain those for seniors for a period of time, and maintain those cottages, and we will, as part of that, be dissolving the Senior Cottage Foundation, and relieving the city of any additional burden going forward relative to senior cottages. I think it's really a great outcome, and I really appreciate all the council's support in getting us there with this project. I want to recognize Keith Strogeren, who's here from Presbyterian Homes, there he is in the back. And to the extent that anybody has any questions that haven't been addressed so far, we can certainly address those now. Michael, if you would like to perhaps get up and give the other portion of the recommendation, which is to move forward with three more homes under the partnership that we've had with community partners for affordable housing.
Love to. Thank you, Tom, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As Alderman Morse said, the outcome for the senior cottages, we think, is a tremendous solution for the city and for maintaining the senior cottages. The second item that we're requesting tonight is, previously, city council had authorized the Housing Trust in partnership with the community partners for affordable housing to purchase two houses within the community and to rehab those houses for affordable purposes. I'm very, very pleased to report that we have identified two houses, we've closed on those houses, those houses have been improved. In fact, I've got a couple of pictures here from our volunteer, Community Volunteer Day. You might recognize the backside of Steve Madden there, doing some work on the porch area there.
That's his better side.
Yeah, but actually, Lake Forest Bank and Trust and Lake Forest Hospital were both very generous in supplying volunteers for us to help clean up the house. The, both houses have been, as I said, have been closed. We have one family that is already in one of the houses. This is the house on McKinley Road. This house in particular had become a real eyesore to the neighborhood, and it was abandoned, it was in foreclosure. City was getting lots of calls on it in terms of its disrepair. And I know several of you were at the open house we had last Wednesday night for this, and I think you'd all agree that they've done a tremendous job on this house. Both of the families that were selected for these were, met our previously established eligibility criteria, they're both Lake Forest families. We had a tremendous application response for these. Of the two houses, we had 25 applications for these houses, so we certainly see a continuing need to support this program. In that regard, we're requesting that the pilot program be expanded from these two houses to three additional houses. Previously, we had, you had approved $200,00, or excuse me, $125,000 for the original two houses. Because of the improving market in this area for this price range, we request that, this request is for $75,000 per house, for three houses, for a total of $225,000, which would come out of the Housing Trust Fund funds for fiscal year 2013.
Just a quick note, Michael, the Housing Trust funds are not city funds, they're funds that have been contributed as part of the replacement for where home, where developments have occurred, and it's a payment in lieu of providing a housing unit, so they come from the landowners and the parties that have petitioned for zoning changes.
And we get a portion of, if demolitions of existing homes ever start again, we get a portion of those fees also.
And what has been the response of the neighbors?
I'm sorry?
What has been the response of the neighbors to these?
The response of the neighbors, particularly on the McKinley House, has been tremendous. We had several neighbors that showed up at the open house last week, and they were, they were thrilled to see the house improved the way it is, they're thrilled to see the family that's moving in there, and they've been very, very supportive.
Yeah, people were bringing gifts and food and bottles of wine, so it was quite nice to see the other.
I wanna, I wanna commend everyone for a great job on that house. I was one of the visitors, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful rehab, and the house looks terrific. I'm curious, what role, if any, did the Housing Trust play in the selection of that house? It was a great choice and a great job.
Well, actually, our partners made things very easy for us, they did almost everything. You know, as you recall, we've had, we had conversations that this really, this portion really isn't in our strength, so we went out and we partnered with, said, community partners for affordable housing. They- Partners for Affordable Housing. They have been doing this successfully for several years in Highland Park and other communities. They actually selected the houses. There was a lot of input from city staff. I think many of the houses that they looked at were houses that we got, as this house, that the neighbors had been complaining about in terms of the disrepair that it had fallen into. So, CPAH went out and worked closely with Lake Forest Bank and Trust in terms of arranging the financing for the houses. But they identified the houses. They brought in the contractors. Many local contractors contributed material and time to support their rehabilitation efforts. And they went, they took our criteria, and they actually handled the selection process also. So, the Housing Trust really didn't know who had been selected for these houses as we wanted it until after the fact CPAH handled all that. And I had talked with both families that have moved into these houses, and they had nothing but positive things to say about the way that process had been handled by CPAH.
Is there a possibility in the future, as this program continues, of selecting a house that's conducive for seniors? I know this particular house, wonderful house, sounds like a wonderful story in terms of the family moving in there. Probably not the greatest house for a senior citizen, but certainly, you know.
Terrific.
Seniors remain a priority of ours. I mean, just because of the physical nature of this house being two stories, you know, it really isn't ideally laid out for seniors. But as a, you know, as a priority of ours in looking for houses, we are looking for ranch houses in neighborhoods, you know, that would be conducive for seniors.
That sounds great.
And in fact, the Estes House was also, would have fit that criteria. We just didn't have a, I don't believe, a candidate was there that matched the senior criteria as well. So, and Rob Anthony's here from Community Partners, if anybody wants to ask him any questions as well.
But, yeah, again, I want to join Kathy for both of you. Just thanks for the time put in. Yeah, there's so many positives that are gained by this, as far as revitalization of houses that have gone into disrepair, gaining traction for affordable housing and showing the community that it can be a positive aspect of the community, preserving the housing sector, so we have diversity of housing. There's so many pluses to this. And just getting this going, devising a way to make it happen, both you and Tom for just achieving this, it's going to pay back the city for years and years to come. So, I, you know, I can't thank you enough for getting this done.
Well, thank you, Kathy. And certainly, Rob's group deserves a lot of the praise. And, you know, we sincerely appreciate the support city council's given us on this. And I'd be negligent if I didn't mention staff, you know, as always, they've done a tremendous job with this.
And I, too, without being redundant here, but it's worthwhile, I certainly want to thank you, you, Michael, and Tom Marsh, and all the members of the Housing Trust for all their hard work in this regard, because two great outcomes, both on the same night, but the whole outcome of the senior housing, the cottages, that's a great outcome that we've been working at for a long time. And then, obviously, the partnership with Community Partners, I think it's fantastic. And I thank you again for your leadership in that role as well. And it's a, it's a great outcome for the community. So, thanks.
Well, thank you.
Can I, do you mind if I ask Rob a question? Rob, would you mind coming forward? So, everybody at home can see you, too. We want to get you on TV. Rob, the city council is considering adding three more units. What was your experience with the two that you purchased, and how quickly or difficult is it going to be to find three more?
You know, when we first started talking about the scattered side approach here in Lake Forest, really, three years ago, there were many, many opportunities. And that's, it's becoming harder and harder to find the kind of quality homes in the community that are still in the price range to make the numbers work, to keep it affordable. So, we believe that over, the timeframe that we've been talking about is over the next 12 months, finding these two to three homes. And so, if we're patient and wait for the right opportunity, we're hopeful that we can find two or three more homes. But we did want to set the expectation that we would have a 12-month period to find these, so that we're not running out and getting the first home that we see that may not be the best home for the, for the program.
Good. Thank you.
So, with that, I'd love to have a motion.
Senior cottage motion first.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
On?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, it's a roll call vote.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five VAs, none As, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie.
And I guess the other part is to make a motion, I'll make a motion, I guess, to approve an amount for three additional homes not to exceed $225,000 in the year of 2013.
A second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five VAs, none As, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, and thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody from the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is our omnibus vote consideration. There are five items on that agenda this evening. I will read them all, and you can take one or all as you so desire. First being a check register for period March 24 to April 27, 2012. The second being an approval of adding additional cab business license. The third being a word of Lake Forest share of the 2012 Joint Concrete Streets Repair and Sidewalk Replacement Program contract. The fourth being an approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant application between the City of Lake Forest and the Illinois Department of Transportation for funding of the historic Market Square train station. And the fifth being approval of the April 16, 2012 city council meeting minutes.
Just had a few questions. I, maybe I might be slowing it down to get Alderman Palmer back. But as far as the?
The mayor can vote and make it fine.
Okay.
If you really. So, you don't need to slow it down.
Okay, then no question.
There we go. That was a challenge put down. It's called a smackdown.
I have a quick one. It pertains to the new cab license.
Yes.
If you look at the inventory of vehicles, they're kind of old. Do we have any procedure for inspecting city licensed cabs? I mean, old isn't necessarily bad, as long as they're well-remained.
Do we have an answer for that?
The police, they have to, each vehicle has to go into the police department each year and get licensed specifically to that vehicle. And they are inspected. They make sure the emissions are up to date. There's no rust, that kind of thing. So, they all have to be looked at and approved by the police department first.
Maintenance records looked at at all?
Yep.
Okay. No more questions.
Any other questions?
No. Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Mayor Cowie.
Aye.
Five VAs, none As, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. As Alderman Palmer gets a few more cookies, we'll start, finish our next piece here. The ordinance, this is our next item on the agenda, and the first being a consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit authorizing the construction of a replacement student residence hall, stormwater management area, and a parking area on the south campus of Lake Forest College. If desired by the council, we can waive the first reading and grant final approval as well, as presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor Cowie, members of the council. This is a recommendation that comes to you with a unanimous recommendation for approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a request for approval of a couple components that I will review in just a moment. But I just wanted to, for the benefit of everyone who may be watching, this request involves south campus of Lake Forest College. This is Sheridan Road. The area of the request is located west of Sheridan Road and to the south of Rosemary Road. As I noted, this request involves several components. The demolition of Moore Hall. This is a 64-bed student residence hall constructed in the late 1800s. Construction of a new residence hall to replace Moore Hall and increase the capacity of beds on campus to 235. Construction of a small parking area that actually already exists. It was left over from construction at the sports center. And construction of a stormwater management area, which is required due to the increase in footprint and based on today's requirements. The Zoning Board of Appeals first heard this item in February of this year. At that time, they saw a plan that actually looked fairly different than the plan you see today. After the February meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals asked for some revisions with respect to siding, with respect to the height of the building, with respect to massing. The changes that occurred, this is the general location of the existing Moore Hall. It really forms a portion of the quad for the other remaining student residence halls. The original building really extended a lot further out this way and then angled in a way that really made it very visible and really allowed it to run parallel to Sheridan Road, based on direction from the Zoning Board of Appeals and based on direction from the Building Review Board, which also saw this item. The mass of the building was broken into two elements, similar to the other student residence halls on south campus. Rather than building up the ground, bringing in fill, the northern mass of the building is actually located, dropped by about 10 feet below the southern mass. So, you really have a building that works much better with the topography. The Zoning Board of Appeals particularly noted that with this new configuration, the northern part of the building is actually located behind Hickson Hall. And given the alignment of this, as you're traveling along Sheridan Road, from no point on Sheridan Road, do you get a full front-on view of the new residence hall. The board also noted that this really helps to define, better define not only the student quad, but also creates an area that really serves as a new gateway to the campus. And this is an image of that gateway. This is looking south from Rosemary Road. This is existing Nolan Hall. This will be the new dormitory. It better defines that student gateway in that area. As I mentioned, the Zoning Board of Appeals did, at their April meeting, unanimously recommend approval of this project. They were actually very enthusiastic about the changes that were made and really commended the college project team for being so responsive. You do have in your packet, I believe it begins on page 25, an ordinance approving a special use permit, which would authorize this project, all aspects of this project. You have a number of, you have 10 ugly recommended conditions of approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Those guide the demolition, construction, traffic. Those require a landscape plan at a later stage in the process. So, pretty standard conditions. In addition, you have two conditions that speak to parking. The Zoning Board did talk about parking on the site, and those conditions talk about not only the addition of the physical parking lot, which would have about 18 spaces, but also talk about some parking policies that the college came forward with in response to some concerns about students not using the spaces that were available. There are over 900 spaces on the college campus, but we do have students that, on occasion, park on residential streets. So, the college really stepped up and agreed to establish some policies to really take on the responsibility of assuring that students don't park on those streets. As I said, this matter was also reviewed by the Building Review Board and was approved based on the new process that the council recently approved. I believe condition four in the report states that the approval is subject to Building Review Board review. The city attorney pointed out that I, that we need to modify that wording just a little bit to acknowledge that the city council will actually, probably on a consent agenda, see the Building Review Board's recommendation at a future agenda. So, if you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading of the ordinance and grant approval of the ordinance in substantially the form presented, and we will work with the attorney to make that appropriate tweak to condition four.
And I would just, if I could just jump in, that that same condition applies to, the same modification applies to condition seven as well.
And I would just note that Leslie Chapman and David Seabird are in the audience as representatives of the college, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Just sorry to make comments on everything, but there's very few petitions that kind of come across for us that involve citizens, where the only calls I've gotten from citizens in First Ward involving this matter have been positive comments. No one had any negative comment that I received involving this. And the only thought that came from anyone in the community was just keeping everyone informed of when the construction would start, so they can anticipate any adjustments. I did have an opportunity to watch a bit of the Building Review Board's process, and I thought building review and zoning and working with the college in this project were just great. I, yeah, I mean, everything seemed to go perfectly. Both sides worked with each other, and it's just a great result for the area.
I was negligent not mentioning that the college did hold open houses for the residents. We did receive calls from residents asking for information. So, the residents knew about it. They received probably three or four different notices. Kathy, I do have a couple of quick questions. In terms of the timeline for this project, is the idea to get this built by the start of the 2013 school year? Yes. I was glad you didn't say 2012. That would have been overly optimistic. But yes, we are working with the college. Assuming your approval tonight, we will work with them very quickly to begin with the demolition of Moore Hall as soon as school ends. So, very soon, we will see that building come down. And in terms of ingress and egress of the construction traffic, are they going to be coming on Sheridan or Washington or? It will probably be Sheridan to Wesley Road, out to 41, but we will work with the city engineer and establish those requirements, as we do for projects of this type, as part of the permit. Okay. And the parking, there's sort of a temporary lot there now, right outside Hickson. It's unpaved. Is the idea that that would remain and become a paved parking lot? Yes. First, it will serve as the construction parking lot. That'll be the area for contractors and for some staging of materials. But yes, that is the area that will, at the end of this project, be converted into a permanent parking lot. And the height, the building height, which looks very reasonable, how does it compare to, say, the height of the fitness center and some of the other, you know, there's some tall buildings over there on south campus? As a result of the breakdown in massing, the tallest part of the building is the northern part, which is more internal to the campus. And that is within six inches of the height of existing Moore Hall. It's about 52 feet to the height of the main ridge. The actual building mass is 42 feet, and then the south building is lower. So, it's very consistent with the other build, other residence halls in this area and consistent with the sports center as well. Although, the sports center is much closer to Sheridan Road. This is back further and is already screened by a substantial hedge in that area. And finally, where are the 60 kids going to go next year? I mean, they're losing a dorm. Where are those? And I would ask Mr. Seabird or Ms. Chapman to? I know they're scrambling, and if you have extra beds at your house, I've offered my bed. There's a bedroom in my house. Pick it up. Which brings me to the only concern that I've heard from neighbors, and these are some of the neighbors near me on Washington, near that, that corner of Washington and Illinois. I know the college has recently purchased two homes that were previously probably rented to students there on the northeast corner of Washington and Illinois. And there's just been some concern expressed over noise and that sort of thing. Not a great deal, but I have gotten a few, a few comments. Before I ask Mr. Seabird to speak, I will say that, from the staff's perspective, the fact that that corner house was purchased by the college is actually a, we see that as a benefit. We have very good communication with the college. They are very responsive when we call about maintenance or about noise issues. I know the student deans have personally talked with the students who live off campus. But you're right, this, this next year during construction, it is going to be a challenge. Yeah. And I think that the neighbors just, you know,
Yeah, and I think that the neighbors just, you know, the concern of the neighbors is, okay, two houses next to each other with college kids living in it, sounds like fun, but could be a little noisy.
Dave Seabird, I'm the director of facilities at the college. There are no plans to put students in those two houses. Current zoning, I believe, allows only three unrelated adults, and we will respect that. Students will be spread among existing other units into some modified spaces, and we may increase the density, but that's still happening, but we're not going to flood your neighborhood with students.
Well, we like them.
They'll be there, but...
We like them, but...
They won't be in your front yard.
All right. Good to know, thanks.
Okay.
Question. We're demolishing a sixty-unit or sixty-person building and replacing it with a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-person building. So I guess the one big issue that jumps to my mind is parking and what the college's policy is on students bringing cars to campus. Are freshmen permitted or only senior classmen? Do cars have to be registered? And most importantly, do decals or some sort of registration sticker have to be put in the windshield so that if they do start parking on residential streets, we can enforce them not doing that?
The zoning board did spend a fair amount of time talking about parking. Juniors and seniors can bring cars to campus. Freshmen and sophomores can only bring cars to campus if they receive a special waiver based on a hardship. They do need to receive permits from the college, and as part of the college's policy, they will actually be doing the enforcement on residential streets because we have this conundrum of residents near the college don't necessarily want their street signed, no parking, because they would like to have their landscapers or visitors park there. So that puts our police department in a position where they can't take it. So to solve this dilemma, that's why you see the condition that speaks to the parking policies. So the college has agreed to take that on, and the number of students parking in the neighborhoods has not been great, but I think the concern was that if we have more cars on campus, that may be more of a problem. The zoning board did recognize that with the expanded number of beds that will be on campus, that actually may help to address some of the rental house issues occurring in the neighborhood by providing more beds to meet the demand.
Any other questions for Kathy? If not, I'd entertain first a motion to waive first reading.
I move to waive first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries, and also entertain a motion for final approval.
Move to grand final approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Five EAs, no NAs, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Now we get to the fun stuff, the new business and the funny business. And I don't like the way this is written, but it says, it says, "Final words for the departing alderman," and that just sounds too, too final. I think it should say maybe retiring alderman, but we do have Tom Morse, who will be terming off the board, and now is our opportunity to make final comments, wishes, thanks. So whoever wants to joke then go right ahead.
That can't be him.
Oh, God. There's our...
Someone should check the caucus screening process.
No, that's really you.
I pulled that one out of the archives for everybody. You know, we've been doing the before and after of the city staff when they retire, so I figured you'd want one of me before, but that's long before.
This is Tom at Woodstock.
That is a guitar, yes.
But you're not wearing glasses.
And hair, by the way.
Your hair is much better quashed now.
Wow. Hey, I'll take first shot.
Shot.
I've known Tom for twenty-five years. I think I first met you at my house at either Thanksgiving or Christmas dinner, and besides serving as alderman, you've served on the plan commission and other boards and commissions, and before that, you have a long history of public service, and you're pretty expert at it. I'm sure even though you're departing from the city council, we'll see you back in public service in short order in one form or fashion, but I thank you for all the time you've given to the city of Lake Forest in many different capacities and look forward to seeing you do it again someday in another capacity, and until then, I'll see you on the golf course, I hope.
Well, I'll jump in. I've known Tom for one year, but I think as a new member, or well, I guess after tonight, no longer, one of the newest members of the city council, but I think the newer members always look to the more seasoned, older members for guidance and support and...
Older.
More seasoned, more experienced, and...
It was a long time ago for Woodstock. Come on.
Tom is never disappointed or let us down. He's always been there to offer his wisdom, to offer his guidance, and it's been very much appreciated. And for me, he's always been the person who's offered some historical perspective, if you will, the guy who's been able to say, well, you know, five years ago or six years ago on council, we talked about a similar issue, or we discussed this before, or, you know, back ten years ago on plan, you know, we talked about this for the first time. And it's great to have that sort of, that perspective, especially as someone who's a bit newer to the game. And I also had the pleasure of working with Tom this summer on the golf committee, and it was a great chance to get to know him better, and just his breadth of experience, his professional experience, his ability to think outside the box is just a great asset. It was a great experience for me, and I want to thank him for his service. I'm honored to have served with him. I'm grateful for his service and happy to call him a friend, so best of luck.
The golf committee was the good guy, bad guy. Figure out who was playing with troll.
Tom, for the sake of it, I was, until I saw the picture up there, going to say that you were one of the first aldermen that I think actually leaves with more hair now than when you came in, but obviously there has been a change. But through my experience, and I've been on council with you for now four years, your knowledge on subjects, what you lend from your professional life is kind of a show to the community that people who volunteer for these positions, qualified persons, are needed. Your expertise is overwhelming. What you've lent to the council in the time I've been here has truly educated me in many ways. We need more people like you. We need more people who lend their knowledge to the betterment of the city, and I can't go on and on about it. You didn't always agree with me, and I need people to check what I do a lot of times, and that's, to me, to me, it's just invaluable because new ideas and other thoughts, aside from what I bring to council, have to be voiced, and I'm wrong a lot, and I need to hear it. I thank you for holding me in check a lot of times, which has been great, but this isn't a goodbye. And looking at that picture, maybe I'll draw back to that era. This is more of a hello goodbye. You'll be around for more city matters. The affordable housing items that have come forward that you've really birthed in this case are going to be around for a long period of time, so what you've lent to the city is going to be around for a long time. You'll be around for a long time, and just thanks, I can't say enough.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kathy. Well, as difficult as for me to say anything serious to Tom or about Tom. I have remarks prepared, but my dog ate them. So I guess less is more. You know, we will, we will miss you a lot, and I think most of all is we will miss your hair. You not only were astute, but here suit, and your heir apparent has no heir apparent, so. Maybe we should just sit down. Everybody missed the emails on Friday, but we had quite a little string of them about hair, hence my idea for the picture you have seen. Seriously, I will miss, I will miss you, and I really do appreciate your experience, and it's going to be tough for the rest of us without it.
Well, I can't keep up with the quick wit of Alderman Palmer, but I do wish to thank you for all your years of dedication to the city, certainly not just on the Housing Trust, but with all the public work ventures that we've gone through and your past experience based mainly with the tollway authority and all your past experience going forward now with your new job and new experience and different ways of funding projects and your vast experience and knowledge, we're going to miss you. We're certainly going to miss you quite a bit. I'm going to miss you because you're usually elbowing me to tell me which way to vote here or how to vote or which way to read the vote, so, and you're usually right, but we thank you again for all your time and your dedication.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Wait before you begin. We do have some fabulous prizes for you...
You do.
...that we want to share with everyone here this evening, and on behalf of all the city staff, we also want to say thank you very much. Alderman Morse was both challenging and fun, but challenging in a very good way because he really would challenge us to think about different angles of questions and really be prepared when we came before the city council, and I think his legacy will live on at the staff level because we, the staff probably heard me if not once a thousand times say, now what questions might Alderman Morse ask? And so they always anticipated those and came much better prepared to the council meetings as a result of Tom's questioning and really challenging us to be the best staff that we possibly could be. Tom's also very fun and knows when to inject humor in the situation and, I think, add to the levity that we need to keep when we're in the serious business that we're in. I think one of the things that Alderman Morse will never be given enough respect or appreciation for is that when you look over his tenure on the city council, he never got the softball issues, he always got the hard issues, whether it was affordable housing, whether it was Laurel Avenue Redevelopment Committee, the Golf Advisory Committee, Elawa, constructing the new MS Building and the hospital expansion and so forth. So there were numerous issues that were given to Alderman Morse, and he stepped up every time, never backed down from those issues because he understood that it was critical for our community to address those issues and not just kick the can down the road and deal with those like so many other governmental agencies do this day. So on behalf of the city staff, we are going to miss you. We have a lot of respect for you, and we know that you're going to be around, which is a good thing because we don't have to say goodbye, as Alderman Novit said. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we do have a couple of small tokens of our appreciation. As you know, we're on a tight budget, so we don't have a lot to do.
Boy, I wonder what that blue one is. Is it original?
It's original.
Do I open it to show you? Yes, because we know. The only, the only question is, is what is it after Morse?
That's right.
Is it a way place or...
Morse Manor.
Or an avenue or a street or a...
It's not Morse after the letter J.
It is a Morse way.
That's right. Hey, after my comments, it had to be way. I thought your daughter would take it to school with her.
It's not above the dining room table.
Above my dining room table. Thank you very, very much, and thank you all for your comments, Michael, Bob, Kathy.
Jim.
And I also thank David and George and Don, who aren't here, as well as being great colleagues, and I very much thank the staff, who I've grown to know quite well over all these years and really enjoyed the time that we spent together. I've learned as much from you as maybe you just said you learned from me, so that was good, and as well learned as much from all my colleagues. I wrote a few just little things here that I'm actually going to read. I don't usually read things, but I wanted to kind of get it right. So it has, and Ken, you said about public service, and it really is something I grew up with, and it's been my whole life, and I've served in many public positions at the state level in all kinds of different places, and I'm lucky enough now to advise politicians and political leaders around the country. I advise governors and mayors and things like that, and I really enjoy it. It's a, I wake up every day and I love going to work, and I love what I do, and I've loved what I've done with Lake Forest. So it's been a great honor for me, and I am grateful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Lake Forest. She is a great city, and she just turned one-hundred-and-fifty years old last year. All of our predecessors have given us a great foundation built on excellence, faith in God, respect for all the people from all walks of life, and sound thinking. We have faced challenges, and you mentioned some of them, whether Costco or Bara College or municipal services or Laurel Avenue or affordable housing, and difficult economic times, but on these and other important issues, we have cooperated fairly well, and not just for the sake of cooperating or partnership or partisanship, but to serve the residents of Lake Forest. So I feel we weren't just making time while we were here serving or while I was here serving, but we made a bit of a difference together, and I'm sure you'll continue to make a difference in the future, and I think the city's been made stronger, and we have left her in fairly good shape, and so that's not so bad. So for that, I thank you all for that opportunity to work with you. Thank you very much. Absolutely. So now I get to go.
Oh, no.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, but you're supposed to stick around because we do have a resolution for you coming up here in the second half of this meeting, and you're all going to swear in coming up, so.
Excellent.
Thanks again, Tom, for everything you've done.
Thank you all. And I will now walk off with my sign.
We'll save from this.
You want to take a quick few minutes, Bobby, if you don't mind? Let's take a few minutes and then we'll regather. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. We go where it's way in. Love to see you again, Tom.
Okay, this is a call for the organization of the 2012-2013 City Council. The oath of office. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye.
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 Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
In the county of Lake.
County of Lake.
And state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowllily swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I was worried that we were gonna say, does anyone object too? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Hi, here. Sorry.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore, absent. Alderman Pandalian, absent. Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Schoenhyder, absent. Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Six present, three absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Bertie. Our first order of business this evening is the election and appointment of city officers, and I would like to read the following. We have... Election by the City Council is required by charter and city code. City Treasurer is Elizabeth Hollab, effective June 1st, 2012. City Supervisor, Bob Kiley. City Attorney, Victor Filippini. City Clerk, Bob Kiley, and the City Surveyor and Engineer, Ramish Kenna Party. Recommended action is obviously to appoint these officers required by the city charter and the city code. I entertain a motion for such approval.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and thank you once again for serving, all of those with the city. Our next item on the agenda is reports of city officers, number one being the comments by mayor. We have, and I'm gonna go through a somewhat lengthy list here, but I think it's appropriate to read a number of the individuals, certainly who are all volunteers on the committees, boards, and commissions, and these are new appointments or individuals that are simply continuing in their terms. So the first we have is the 2012-2013 new board and commission appointments and reappointments, the first being the Audit Committee. And I would like to just note on the Audit Committee, there was a name inadvertently admitted that should be added, and that is Brent Lewin from the Fourth Ward. The other members are Amy Krebs, Andrew Mawarti, Andy Logan, and Michelle Moreno. So we'd like to thank them for serving as well. The next being the Building Review Board, we have John Clare and Monica Ruggles. The next item being the Cemetery Commission, we have Crew Bedler and Amy Schutz. The next one being the Construction Coach Commission, we have Martin Fiore and Peter Whitmer. The next being Croya, which is Lori Doherty, Marcy Kerr, Marilyn Reiner, Joseph Santello, and Kate Wally. The next one being the Fire and Police Board, we have Phil Foss, again, as our chairman. On the Gordon Board, Alan Lerner, Sandy Turner, and Mark Ventling. The Housing Trust Fund Board, Tom Trop is reappointed as well. The Legal Committee, we have Natasha Max, Ray Bushman, Peter Hamilton, and Dave Newmeister. The Library Board is Lisa Detling, Janet Gibson, and Reese Markusen. The Senior Resource Commission is Jim Buzzard, Nancy Carey, Jill Shavitz, Carol Erber, and Paul De Moon. So again, we thank you all for volunteering, we appreciate your support, and the recommended action is obviously to approve the appointments recommended by the mayor. Move to approve the appointments as stated?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your reaffirmation of all these individuals. Our next item on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for Ward III Alderman Tom Morse, and Tom, you didn't get away that easy, so we're gonna have you back up here in one quick minute, but I'd like to read the resolution into the record for Tom, and the resolution states, "Whereas Tom Morse was instrumental in moving the city forward in supporting and encouraging affordable housing, through his efforts and his passion for affordable housing, the city adopted an affordable housing plan, established an inclusionary housing ordinance, and has developed a successful partnership with community partners for affordable housing through which existing homes are purchased, improved, and made available to Lake Forest residents in need. And whereas Tom Morse as a member of the Plan Commission played a key role in discussions and resolution of many projects, including Regent's Row, Amberly Woods, Willow Lake, the Thorndale, Vicks, Walgreen and Bishop Woods subdivision, as well as code amendments relating to the Central Business District. Whereas Tom Morse in his role of Third Ward Alderman offered professional expertise and guidance to the city with respect to efficiencies and transparency purchasing policies, soliciting multiple bids for products and services and preparing various requests for proposals and bids. And whereas Tom Morse participated in the restructuring of management and operations at Deer Path Golf Course, whereas Tom Morse challenged his colleagues and city staff to think differently, consider various points of view and opportunities, and strive for excellence in all areas. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to Tom Morse for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means to this resolution, which shall be spread upon the permanent records of the City Council." Tom, again, we thank you for all you've done for the city. Come on up.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And as Tom knows, it's one of the things I usually forget to do, so... So it sounds like Kathy's gonna take up that trade now. Our next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
The only comment is that we welcome the new Third Ward Alderman, and anything we can do to help make the transition easier, just let us know.
Appreciate it.
And you get to see how much fun we have up here every night, so...
He's not going to sing his college fight songs while standing in his chair. Just kidding, we don't do that.
Any other comments by council members? I guess this is your opportunity, so... Nope? All right. We'll move on to opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Anyone here from the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to items for the omnibus vote consideration, and we have just a list of the schedule of regular meetings of the City Council for fiscal year 2012 to 2013, and I am not gonna read all those. Those are there for your calendar items, but I would ask for approval of the schedule as noted in your agenda items.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Let's see, we gotta get going here. Here's the...
Aye.
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 Got it. The next item is ordinances, and first being a consideration of memorandum of understanding regarding the Lake Forest Consortium for Environmental Leadership presented by Chuck Myers, Parks and Forestry Superintendent. Chuck?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm excited to present to you the Lake Forest Consortium for Environmental Leadership. I did wanna let you know upfront that we won't be looking for any recommended action tonight. This is informative only. The MOU that you were given a copy of with the bylaws, you hopefully had a chance to look at that, that is the general framework for the consortium. There will be some minor tweaks to that going forward, and I also wanna let you know that the mission statement for Open Lands is in the draft stage only, so that will be developed as well. The consortium is voluntary collaboration among an initial group of institutions, which includes the City of Lake Forest, Lake Forest College, Lake Forest Elementary School District 67, Lake Forest High School 115, and the Lake Forest Open Lands Association. Just by looking at those groups, you can kind of get a pretty good idea of where this is going. It combines the idea of education, the environment, and the city. It's kind of a great group. We've been meeting for a number of months to put this framework together, formulate ideas for it, and we're now presenting this to you tonight to let you know where we're at. So as I said, this is a voluntary collaboration. There will be opportunities for other institutions to join, as long as they believe in the mission of this consortium and the goals set forth by it. The role of the consortium is to bring together the collective resources of these institutions to assist the community in identifying and considering existing issues and identifying new programs and approaches that encourage environmental thinking. These, as you know, Lake Forest has had a long history of care for the environment and its natural heritage, so this is the next step. It's taking it to the next level in bringing these groups together. The consortium will also define conservation and environmental goals, identify and enact policies and programs that positively influence behavior, promote citizen involvement and awareness, and protect and restore our communities' unique natural heritage. There are some general goals that we've put together broadly. You can remember this by just remembering ACE, Awareness, Collaboration, and Engagement. We don't want this to just be a group that makes people aware of the environmental issues, even though that's very important to start there, but we want people to act, and that's an important factor moving forward. Some of the specific goals that we've identified are to promote awareness of environmental concerns associated with the decline of ecosystems and the loss of biological diversity, and recognize the value of protecting our natural heritage and open space. This would include things like water quality, ravine and bluff degradation, eradication of invasive species, air quality issues, tree disease and pest threats, and reduction of waste, to name a few. A second goal would be to promote awareness of community-wide projects and programs aimed at improving the natural environment and improving the overall quality of life in Lake Forest. Another goal would be to engage a network of resident volunteers to work and take action within our community to address environmental issues and manage the natural resources of the city. Another goal would be to facilitate community governance and subsequent action through collaboration with consortium member groups and city residents. And then finally, to provide collaboration in the development of responsible environmental standards, city ordinances, and policies, and the promotion of educational awareness for environmental practices in our community. So we're excited about this going forward, and as I said, we're not really asking for any action tonight, so if you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Chuck, you know, a few weeks ago, I had the pleasure, on a truly rainy and miserable Saturday morning, of joining a group that was organized by yourself and Open Lands to go to Forest Park and not just talk about it in the board meeting, but actually seeing interested citizens that were willing to donate some time, get their knees dirty, and help work on bluff restoration, and pull out a lot of garlic mustard, and learn a lot about bluff restoration and the environment that is unique to Lake Forest. bluff restoration and the environment that is unique to Lake Forest. I thought it was a great opportunity. A lot of times, that hands-on approach makes you appreciate a little more of the community that you're involved in. And truly, where I feel lucky to live in this community, hearing your discussion, the educational program was something that heightened my appreciation of what we've got here. I know there's another volunteer program also, by the way, on May 19th, where I think it's gonna be working on the McCormick Ravine at 9:00 a.m., and another opportunity to put a little sweat equity into the community, but also to learn. And I did appreciate the speech and discussion you had at the beginning, so I knew what I was doing instead of merely pulling out plants. I think this is great. It's a natural fit, and it's maybe organizing the resources of the community to move towards a much more positive result. Again, thank you for your efforts. Today, I feel like I've just been thanking everyone, but it's a great community, and yeah, maybe I should. But only best of luck, this is a great thought.
All right, thank you.
And I just want to say, Chuck, there was a lot of discussion in this regard about environmental stewardship at this past weekend in our strategic planning, and Kurt Volkman, who will be on this committee, was there, and glad to have him on board. And he started back with our original environmental committee, and I know he's very dedicated to it, and as are you, and I'm glad to see that both of you have signed up for this. It's a great, great opportunity for the city, so thank you for doing it. I know there's no formal action tonight, just for information purposes, but we just want to let you know that we do support you.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments for Chuck? No? Thanks. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda is Boat Basin Dredging Policy presented by Jeff Wade, Superintendent of Special Facilities. Jeff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Bringing forward to you a proposed policy regarding the frequency and criteria for lakefront boat basin dredging. Give you a little bit of background, back in December of 2011, the city received correspondence from members of the Lake Forest Yacht Club, excuse me, requesting that the city reinstitute a scheduled two-dredge event on a fixed basis each year. At the time that we received the correspondence, we were just about to enter the budget process, and then the representatives were informed that this would be a good opportunity for staff to look at the costs and the service impacted associated with a two-dredge event as routine practice. To back up a little bit, back in 2001, the city purchased its own hydraulic dredger at a cost of $255,000, that is the dredger out working at the basin in early March, or excuse me, late March, early April. Part of that justification was that we could schedule two dredges each year, one in the springtime, one in the fall. Now, in the 10 years since purchase, that purchase, we have only conducted two dredges each, for, excuse me, we've only conducted three dred, pardon me, two dredges, three years in a row. We could have done it last year, but because of the access road being blocked off, we chose not to do the dredge last year, last fall. Also, back in 2008, we did receive some complaints from boat owners about the dredging policy, and in light of the cost of services study and shrinking budgets, we again decided to look at dredging as a routine policy. And we decided that because of the small number of boaters affected, at the time, there were only four boats in the compound that were affected by the amount of sand that was in the basin. And at that time, the water levels were fairly high. Right now, we're in a low secular level for lake levels, and that's really based on the amount of snowfall that we get each winter and the snow melt filling back up into Lake Michigan, so right now, we're at a low level. So that makes dredging even more important. And last fall, we did have to cancel some of our community-based programming because we couldn't get one of our boats out. It did also hamper some of the Lake Forest High School sailing team's ability to get out into Lake Michigan to practice. And this is a group that competes quite frequently for the Midwest Inter-Scholastic Sailing Association Championships every year. In fact, we have a group going out to Seattle in a couple of days for a national event, and that's the first time that we've made it to a qualifier to go to nationals. So being able to have access to Lake Michigan for our own programming is extremely important. Now, the annual dredging expenses will vary depending on the amount of time and sand that has to be removed out of the basin, but generally, last year's spring dredging was approximately $15,000. The fall dredging won't cost as much because there's a smaller amount of area that we need to dredge out to make sure that boaters have access to Lake Michigan. And let me just get a quick picture here. You can see in the red, that is what we do in the springtime, so that's the entire area that we do. And then for the yellow area is the area that we will do for the fall dredging. The amount of money for the red area, again, is $15,000. Of that, direct expense associated with dredging is only $7,000. We do utilize park, staff, so that cost will be incurred no matter if they're gonna be dredging or they're working on other park projects. So the amount to do the yellow, although we've set aside $7,000 to do that, with a one-week dredging would be approximately $5,000 to be able to do that. Back in the fall, City Council did approve fees, and that's gonna help us offset the cost of that second dredge. So now, there are some benefits to making sure that we have a usable basin. First of all, it's gonna enhance the safety for all boaters by reducing the potential risk of boats being grounded. The usable harbor supports the year-round city-operated community sailing school. We do fulfill our commitment to our patrons, paying fees for storage and launching privileges by providing access to Lake Michigan during the primary boating season of May through October. We do provide services, which results in a revenue stream to help support lakefront services and capital expenses. Now, we have put in place some triggers so that we, or excuse me, we have put in some place in this policy of expectations of staff, and you know, the staff will make sure to fund two dredges every year, that we will plan and commit for sufficient manpower to complete the two dredges. We'll make advance arrangements with the necessary crane company and tow service, that's the, we need to have a tow company come to take the dredger from MS down to Lake, down to the lake, and then there's a crane that picks it up and puts it in the water, so we need to make sure that we schedule that accordingly. For this fall dredge, we will need to make those arrangements in advance so that we can expedite when we're going to do that. Now, we have put in some triggers as to when we're gonna do the second dredge. If by the end of August, that the water level is less than five and a half feet, we will conduct the second dredge. If it's greater than five and a half feet, we will not conduct that dredge. The main dredge will always occur, hopefully that we will have everything done by May 1st. We didn't make that date this year because we've had significant downtime due to a pump being, having to be special ordered, but we will make sure that we try to hit that target. The second dredge will occur right after, if we hit that five and a half feet, we will do that dredge right after Labor Day, and just do the area within the yellow portion. If the city will not dredge after October 1st, as the conditions on Lake Michigan is just not conducive to doing the dredge. And if we do a second dredge and it fills back in shortly thereafter, we will not do a third, we'll just commit to the two dredges. So staff worked with the Lake Forest Yacht Club to come up with these triggers, these criteria for what the city will do, but we don't feel that it is necessary to automatically do a second dredge. Staff will monitor the water levels, making sure that if we hit that target, that we will go ahead and do the second dredge, but as a basis of doing it, irregardless of the depth, we don't feel that is appropriate. So again, we worked, we did work with the Yacht Club to formalize this policy, and if you don't have any questions, we just request that you approve or finalize the lakefront boat basin dredging policy to begin fiscal year '13.
I have a general question. I'm not sure I understand how this works. It's like a vacuum. You vacuum the, where do you put the sand when you vacuum it up?
Yeah, that's a good question. What happens is this, it's very much like a vacuum. There's a hose that goes to where the ramp launch is, and it goes all the way down the south along that road and discharges right when you come off the hill around the pavilion, it exits at that location.
What are we gross in boat storage fees? And then what do we gross in ramp launch fees? Do the boating fees pay for this effectively?
The second dredge, yes. Yes, it will. It will offset that, and all, when we've taken into consideration the what it takes to do the spring and the fall dredge, those, the cost is offset by storage and launch fees.
And then the only other comment I have is, if the practice is going to be to do this by May 1st, the first dredge, then you've got the months of May, June, and July would be three months, so it would seem to me to put off a fourth month and do the second dredge after Labor Day, there's what, there's only a month of good boating season left, right? The month of September. Do many people boat in October?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, we did hear a lot of comments from the Yacht Club about the inability to get out there, especially this year. October was a beautiful month, and they just were not able to get out because of the lack of the second dredge.
And the water has a tendency to be a little bit warmer, and we don't want to leave out August also. We've got that fourth month in there. But yeah, the boating season has kind of improved as you get towards July, August, September. That's the height of the season.
No, I wasn't leaving out August. I was just thinking we should do it every 90 days. You do it May 1st, and then you cover May, June, July, then do it August 1st, and you cover August, September, October.
Right, if we do hit the five and a half mark before the end of August, we'll schedule that for right after Labor Day, or, yeah, Labor Day, I'm sorry, I wasn't very clear about that.
Sorry, just one other item with that. In order to put the dredge, the dredge, once it's in the water, we must secure it at the docks. So if we put that in during the prime month of seasons, it really restricts our ability for launching our other boats from the compound as well as our powerboat launchers. So we try to avoid the key busiest months of the basin and do that second dredge kind of once after, we get right after, we get after Labor Day.
Any other questions for Jeff? Entertainer motion for approval of the boat basin dredging policy? Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novich?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Five AAs, no NAs, motion carries.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other new business this evening? Bob? No?
I have a question. I thought we were going to have our cell phone ordinance revived at this meeting.
Oh, actually, we held that to the May 22 meeting because of the turnover in the council this evening. So yeah, it's scheduled for May 21st.
And question on that, and the support for Alderman Palmer, does the Senate and I look like they're closing in on doing anything, or?
Well, it passed out of the House, as I've reported, and as of last week, I'd also heard that the Senate was gonna vote on it, but as of Friday, they hadn't brought it up in committee. It's still in Senate Committee now, and that was one of the, when I was down in Springfield about 10 days ago, they said it was 50/50 as whether or not it was gonna make it out of committee. If it doesn't make it out of committee by the end of May, then it's dead for this legislative session. But I think we'll give it our best shot as of May 21st. We'll see where it's at and go forward. And the other thing is, is that we would, if the state was going to adopt its own legislation anyways, we would still want to adopt ours so that we could then have the tickets written and reviewed by our administrative hearing officer. So the only shortfall would be is if we do adopt it on May 21st, and then the state does follow up with its own state law, we might have to go back and tweak it so it's consistent with the state law, but we can deal with that once the state finally does adopt something.
Yeah, that's, I don't know if we have that much time to wait.
Well, and unfortunately, and you may have seen some of this in the newspaper, is that the state sort of put it on the back burner, and then about a month or so ago, there was a very critical crash in southern Illinois where a mother was texting involved in a serious accident. I think a couple of children were killed, and all of a sudden, they had some renewed interest in it. Now, I can't tell you what's, where they're gonna go between now and the end of May, but it just seems to fluctuate in terms of their level of interest.
Any other items for discussion this evening?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
This is like letting fire aim.
Let's go.